Doug Dudley's thumb up. There it is.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the January 21st, 2014 City Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance or remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, give the council the wisdom to make decisions on behalf of the citizens and visitors of Avalon. Bless the men and women in the armed services. Keep them safe and bring them home quick. Amen.
Thank you, Ralph. Announcements, written communication?
Don't have any announcements, nightmare.
Okay. We have a fats, oils, and grease presentation, though, this evening.
We do, and for that we'd like to call forward Mr. Dennis J.H. and Mr. Jordan Monroe to provide this brief and succinct presentation.
Good evening. As you know, according to the CDO, Cease and Desist Order, the city is, has to take on the fats, oils, and grease implementation. That stands, acronym for that is FOG. You'll be hearing a lot about that. We're fortunate enough to have Mr. Jordan Monroe develop and present to you a PowerPoint presentation. It's a brief summary of what we have to do with all the food establishments here on the island, and it covers most things that's going to have to transpire. I'll give to you, Mr. Monroe.
Thanks so much while the PowerPoint loads up. We are working on a fats, oil, and grease program. Fats, oils, and grease really affects our sewer system, which is why we're really taking care of this, and is part of our CDO, as is part of our Avalon Municipal Code. So, to begin at the beginning. Fats, oils, and greases, as Dennis said, often referred to as FOG, or specifically FOG. This is kind of how one meal affects us all. So each restaurant doing their thing has an impact on the entire community, and that's kind of the point that we want to bring home tonight. The Cease and Desist Order mandates that we implement an FOG program, which we have done with the introduction of the Avalon Municipal Code on May 21st of 2013, and it was adopted on June 4th, 2013. And so we have met those requirements, and now we are following through with our FOG program. Some definitions to kind of look over, so you're familiar with the terminology. Fats, oils, and grease commonly referred to as grease, commonly referred to as FOG. Food service establishments are FSEs. Those are all pretty much the restaurants. A food grinder is a garbage disposal. Grease control device is a grease interceptor or grease trap. That's what prevents grease from going into our sewer infrastructure. A grease interceptor is a device that captures the FOGs themselves in remodeling. That's what's going to happen when business does major work, and that's going to be important later. We have measured 63 or 64 food service establishments in Avalon. It's kind of hard to see on this map, but you can see all these tiny little dots, all downtown, out the casino, up the canyon, out at Pebbley Beach, are all different FSEs that we have here in town, serving the community and visitors alike. And we've gone through and organized and categorized all these different FSEs through our consultant with RBF and John Kinley, and they have categorized, you can see, the yellows, blues, and reds. We break it down to, we don't have any FSEs in town that have a gravity grease interceptor. That's a very large grease trap, grease interceptor. We have five that have hydro-mechanical grease interceptors. It's a smaller system. 16 in town do not require any grease control device. They're not in production that requires them to have a grease control device, but we have 42 without any grease control device that do require one. And those are all the yellows. So that's where you can see 67 percent of our food service establishments do not have a grease control device and require one. So those are the ones that we're really targeting. However, at any time if any restaurant, food service establishment changes the nature of their business, they're subject to revaluation and might be required to have some sort of grease control device. How this affects the city, the town, and everyone here, this is our sewer system, a picture of some of the lines that we have updated, and all of the sewers, wherever you are, tie into these major lines that then all come together into one line that goes out to the wastewater treatment facility at Pebbley Beach. So when you've got a lot of restaurants saying that they don't produce FOGs, they haven't had an impact, they've never experienced any issues at their particular restaurant, well, that's because typically fats, oils, and grease go into the system hot in liquid form, and so they blow right through your system, and when they enter to the main sewer system, by the time they get out towards Pebbley Beach, they cool down, solidify, and cause backups, which requires EnviroN Strategies to go out quite frequently and service them. Those backups also generate the smells that you might have in town that's not necessarily coming from the wastewater treatment plant itself. That's coming from backups in our sewer system due to the FOG program. FOG in the pipelines, it hampers the general flow of wastewater in the sewer system. It'll block up sewers and pipes, creating blockups into homes, businesses, and into our harbor, which is why this is part of the CDO. It's hazardous to our health, and it is very expensive. You can see here they are. This is some example of FOG coming into the sewer system, actually just earlier this year, when they were finishing up the replacement of the pipeline out at Pebbley Beach. This is out at the facility with a Bobcat scooping up the FOG. Sources of FOG into the sewer system at the restaurants, meats, cooking oils, butter, baked goods, shortening, it will clog the system, and it's not an uncommon story here in town. Where they usually enter into the system are three-compartment sinks. When these dishes and everything's being washed off, your prep sinks, floor drains, mop sinks, pre-wash sinks, pretty much everywhere where you're handling the food and then washing it and washing it down, it goes into the sinks and goes into our system. So as per Avalon Municipal Code that we adopted, discharge into the system is prohibited. It spells it out very clearly throughout the whole thing. Those are the main categories, so you can go through and read them. We'll be having, and it calls out, you know, no discharge of FOG into the system, food grinders, you know, garbage disposals, which add solids to our system, waste cooking oil. It calls out the whole process. So what this means is these grease interceptors, grease control device, there's two main kinds that we are looking at. Gravity grease interceptors, which are typically large units that are installed in the ground, you know, 500 to 1,500 gallons or larger. And then hydro-mechanical grease interceptors are commonly referred to as HGIs, and they are smaller based on the flow rate, their size based on the flow rate that a restaurant generates and about how much FOG they produce in a time. How it works is it simply separates the FOG from water, basically using gravity, because that floats and water is heavier, and so then the water continues out to our sewer system. The FOG gets separated and serviced and removed as required. So this is a big thing, because an ounce of prevention prevents an ounce from entering our system, and that may seem, not seem like a lot, one meal cooked at a restaurant may not seem like a whole lot, but we did a little bit of math. EnviroN Strategies collects five buckets, those Bobcat buckets, a week out of our sewer system. That's eight cubic feet per bucket, seven and a half gallons per cubic foot, seven pounds per gallon at 52 weeks a year. That's 109,200 pounds of grease removed from our sewer system on an annual basis. And that may be a conservative estimate. That's kind of based on our, what we've seen in the past, and it doesn't include everything that's already clogged in our system and everything that makes it all the way to the wastewater treatment plant. Again, that's 109,000 pounds of fats, oil, and grease. That is not insignificant. I mean, I was blown away when I heard that number and what it has an impact on our system. So there should be no question as to why this system is incredibly important. For the restaurants, what that means to understand FOG production, basically it's a kind of, you can get estimates based on how many customers you have a day, the type of meals you're producing. You could see low grease production, sandwich shops. Medium grease production would be coffee shops. High grease production could be pizzerias. And depending on how many people you have would require how much grease you, shows how much approximately grease you're producing over a period of time, which would mean how much you need to have your interceptor or grease control device serviced. So what we're kind of looking at is a two-phase implementation to help make it easier for the food service establishments in town to come into compliance. Phase one, we're looking at an initial under sink HGI implementation. This would tie in one, two, and three compartment sinks specifically. This would allow restaurants to provide a solution on a quicker basis, and it gets us real results immediately, quickly, and it is far less expensive than going full bore, which is phase two, which is during renovations, FSEs will be required to generate professional engineering, all of their piping into the grease control device as per required through the specs, and demonstrate that they have captured their whole source and putting it in. And that might require putting some into ground, which is a huge deal, not only for the food service establishment, but for the city itself. As we know, we are a very tiny town, and we don't have very much space to put a lot of things, especially in ground, because we have a lot of utilities already there. And so that would be a way to separate out this process to get us real results quickly, but without undergoing huge costs, not only for the city, but for the food service establishments, and would probably drag out a process much longer. Along with that, we have Best Management Practices, which is called out in our Municipal Code, to help educate people and understand the different elements that they need to be complying with. So drain screens, which would require, instead of garbage disposals, so your drain screen takes all the solids that would, you'd get ground up otherwise and go in the sewer system, and they just get simply thrown in the trash. Waste cooking oil collection process, which is of course going to be a big part of this whole component, the collection of not only FOGs, but cooking oil, food waste separation, employee training, so that employees know what they're doing and what their impact is. And additional practices, we have separation of your food. So compostable food waste, all the green waste needs to be going into specific bags and separated out from garbage, separated out from misacables, and that's per code. Use cooking oil receptacles, as well as little things such as discharge prohibited. That means that washing down your mats into our sewer system through storm drains, through floor drains, is prohibited, because that all is contributing to our FOG within the city. And so just through education, we will be able to help the different food service establishments and their employees know how better to participate. It'll be implemented with a, we've already done our initial evaluation, as you saw with the color coding of all the different food service establishments. We will then have follow-up with both Best Management Practice inspections, as well as the grease control device themselves. So we will be making sure that they are being used properly, properly maintained, and properly serviced. And service, maintaining, and collection is going to be a huge portion of this. You know, it is going to have to have a record for the grease control device, what type storage containers, records of collection, of proper disposal. Currently, you could see buckets just dumped in the alleyway, and that is grease. And not only is it unsightly, it's unsanitary, and is not a good system. It's unacceptable. So our next steps is to have a food service establishment stakeholder meeting. We will be notifying all the different food service establishments based on their categorization, whether they require some sort of grease control device or not, but all are welcome to attend. We will be educating and informing them on our FOG program, what it means, what it means for them, why it's important, getting feedback from them of our implementation strategy as we kind of coordinate and work with them to help do it. And then there will be the implementation, which as you saw on the previous slide, looks at December of 2014 to have the phase one completed. And so that's kind of an overview of how we want, what we're doing, why it's important, and how we want to make it happen. And so if you have any questions, we've got a whole team up here who can answer any questions, but we'll be going through a lot with the specific food service establishments, so they can work together. We're really trying to make this process as easy for them. Typically, in other cities, we've been calling around, trying to get feedback of how their FOG programs work, because this is not unique to Avalon. In other cities, it is just up to the food service establishment. It's their job to get this all taken care of. We feel that we're in kind of a unique position with 42 different food service establishments that all have to deal with this, so we want to make the process as easy as possible for all 42 of them and letting it be, instead of it just being you're on your own, case by case, you deal with it, and it comes to us. That way, we can also make sure that it's all taken care of to our desire and to the code as it happens. And that's what I've got for you right now.
Thank you, Jordan. I have one question for you.
Let's hear it.
Have we analyzed how much FOG is contributed by residential use?
That, in a lot of other cities, I looked into a little bit, is much harder to determine and harder to manage. The food service establishments throughout most cities are the major contributor, which is specifically why we want to take care of them, but no doubt individual residents have an impact. An education of them, of you're cooking bacon, pouring it down the sink is unacceptable, and why that is so is a great part of the process. And hopefully through our education of the different food service establishments, they'll start leaning on it. But in terms of specifically how much they have an impact on, it's really hard to get a specific number.
Okay, so is there a method of measurement that the Cease and Desist Order is kind of trying to address? In other words, are we attempting to remove 90 percent of the fats, oils, and greases from our collection system, or is it, I mean, have they set established targets?
In the Cease and Desist Order, it just specifically states, and I don't know if it expands upon it later, that we will establish an FOG program. And the details of it to be implemented are probably, they're not specifically called out. It's in Section 1, Number 8, FOG Control Program, and it just says, "By June 30th, 2013, the discharger shall develop and implement an effacial grease blockage control program." And so that's what we've done.
If I can address that, what the Cease and Desist Order requires is that we develop certain programs, and then there's an overall measure in terms of what goes into either the plant or the harbor, and that sets certain standards as to measure how all the various programs are working or are not working. What I will tell you is in two weeks from now, we'll have Sean Hagerty from my office, who's a person that's been working with the State Board, and he's going to give you an update on where we are with compliance with the Cease and Desist Order, and what more we have to do, and how all these measurements are, how we have to meet certain measurements. So there'll be a much more detailed discussion in two weeks on that aspect of it.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience have a question?
Who has, but the, those have a question, just the one we have down at the Blue Water Grill. I was witnessing the other day, one of our local contractors, or one of the plumber contractors was down there cleaning, they had a problem there. Do we have a, besides the city vac truck, is there a vac truck available to take care of these things as the new ones start getting built, or do we have one now?
Each grease interceptor is privately owned. Specifically, the Blue Water Grill has a private company that comes and sucks out the grease.
Okay. So we, do we have a vac truck for that here now?
We have one.
Not the city's, the private sector.
I asked Cheryl Allison that before the meeting, Richard, and it gets shipped over on one of their charter barges when it's needed.
Okay.
And so, no, it is not on the island all the time, not at the current time.
Well, the reason there was, is they were, it was a safety issue when I was down there, to me, anyway, it looked like. One of the plumbers was reaching down, and I don't know if it could have been just taken care of with a vac truck prior to him doing what he had to do, but he was halfway down this hole down there.
No.
And to me, he was, his brother was holding him by the pants, and if he would have slipped or fell, I don't care how fast the fire department or the paramedics would have got there, it would have been a, not a very nice rescue.
No, I agree with you.
So on the safety part of it, it, I'm concerned with that, and I know we're going to have these going out throughout the city, so I think it would be in the best interest of somebody to have that truck here on the island to prevent that and go down and do that stuff, but.
Yeah, it's a good point.
That's just my opinion.
A good point, Councilman. We'd prefer to be notified prior to that, so we can make sure that all safety precautions are met. We'll look into that.
Okay.
Now, those units, though, can be, can be scheduled to have maintenance every so often, depending upon the usage.
Depending upon the usage and the capacity of each unit.
Yeah.
Yes, and that is going to be part of our outreach to each specific FSE.
So the plan is to go to every restaurant and do an analysis on what they need to comply with, and then we need to give them time to integrate that into their.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, that's exactly correct.
What's the timeline?
CR and R told the restaurants, so.
Did you?
The consultant did, and he got colored sheet that was up there that Dr. Monk approved that specifically listed what each of the restaurants needed.
So they're all well aware that this is coming down the line?
Yes, they are.
And what's the timeframe? When do they have to have this in place?
December, I believe.
December 14th.
The end of the year.
Our first phase, as Jordan was talking about, is the smaller HGIs, and we hope to have that implemented by the end of this year, December.
And while we're doing that for the restaurants, we can also make suggestions to the residents how to handle the food stuffs ahead of time.
Correct. Yes, Mayor, your question about the residents is, I feel we're catching a lot of that during our ongoing sewer inspections. We're running videos, and many times we'll notice some grease and try to follow it back. Fortunately, we haven't seen any, any sign of heavy grease coming from a particular residence, but we will be looking into that. It's a good point.
Is there a ballpark in cost for phase one?
No. No, sir. I'm sorry. The city's been receiving several manufacturers' cut sheets and products. Unfortunately, each restaurant, each food establishment area has different piping. Gray water has to be separated, dishwasher has to be separated, so we don't, at this time, have a cost estimate. It's going to be more or less site-specific. That particular restaurant's going to, a smaller one, of course, is going to be less money. We also have to consider the engineer that would have to come in and design some of these. It's a, it's a new, it's a new plan, and we're just kind of getting our feet wet. But the city is striving to keep the cost down to the best we can, and we're going to be talking to all the stakeholders and see what we can do to help as far as implement the procedure.
Is there money budgeted to help these restaurants?
We don't have any items.
It's not there? Okay.
But I want to reiterate that the reason we're recommending a phase one and phase two is phase two is what the specific requirement would be, and that is very expensive. That's a much larger cost, and we think that phase one is an acceptable route to go to get results. It's by no means cutting corners. It is an acceptable solution, but it's much more cost, it's a much lesser cost than phase two. And so that's why we've recommended splitting up this process into two separate phases and getting results across the board quicker, as opposed to trying to drag it out and the cost that it would be for all these different FSEs to go through the full phase two implementation right now, which is the other option. So that's what we're looking at and trying to work out with, which requires more coordination on our part than otherwise just letting them be off on their own. But it's definitely much cheaper.
Will we be getting status reports along the line as we're going downstream to December so that we know where we are?
Of course.
Because, you know, Murphy's Law, when we get down to the end, we're not going to be there yet.
Yeah, no, we're going to be on top of it. We're mandated by the CDO, and we're being proactive, and it's on our, it's in our scope. So we'll be on it.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Tighten with the FOG program, I would like Cheryl Allison, if she doesn't mind, to come up and talk about her visits to all the restaurants, because we've been trying to be diligent. They hit all, CR and R's crew came over, hit the restaurants. I think you got all of them right, Cheryl?
Almost.
Almost. To really, the green bag program, brown bag, what we used to call it, but the restaurants aren't really doing that, and that ties in, if they're really separating their food waste, it's less going into our, the drains, and so it all ties in together, as well as washing the mats, the greasy mats. Cheryl, you want to?
So this past Thursday, four people came over from CR and R, from their community outreach. Three of them went around to all the businesses just to gather information, like contact information and mailing addresses, because most of the information we had was from the property tax rolls, so that we know who the managers are and how to reach them and what their local mailing addresses are. One of them, and myself, and Miguel Bonilla, went to all of the food, what do you call it, food service establishments, and we got, most of them in town, there were a few that were either closed for that day or, you know, for a couple of weeks. So I will be going back and visiting the ones that were closed, but we basically gave them the trifle brochure that had been mailed before, offered posters for the kitchen if they had room, and just talked to them about the fact that it's part of the municipal code and that it will be enforced going forward. And I'd say 99.9 percent of the restaurants were very receptive, and we probably got about 10 of them that had never ordered green bags before, that ordered them right then and there, and we delivered them basically the same day. So it went pretty well. And then we're going to have a follow-up in June, right before the season, just to kind of try to remind everybody, and if they've got any new seasonal employees, to kind of make sure they train them as well.
Have you seen an increase in green bag collection?
Well, it's only been since Thursday, so, not much, but we expect there will be.
We've had a problem with county health when they've come to inspect the landfill. Our compost pile is not up to par, so we've had action items there to take care of violations.
Yeah, there was a few months we didn't get any clean bags. There were a lot of green bags, but they were mixed in with a lot of plastic and straws and stuff, and if it's like that, we can't put it in the compost pile. But it's gotten, it's gotten a little better. We're getting about, I'd say, six to eight tons a month, but it does need to get quite a bit better.
And what, how much food waste do you believe is in the normal trash stream that you need to remove?
Commercial or residential?
Well, that, see, how do you draw the line there?
Yeah, well, commercial is the only program we're actually requiring that people separate it. I frankly have no idea. I would guess there's probably five times more than we're getting, at least, that's possible to get, so.
We have some work to do. We have some work to do.
Yeah, we do.
City code enforcers will be doing pop, popping visits to see how it's going, so anybody that's not separating will be cited.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
Okay, oral communications. Anyone in the audience care to address the council for any item that is not currently on our agenda? You may now come forward. Welcome back, Dennis.
Thank you. I'm sure the City Council knows, but I want to make sure the public knows of the situation we have down on Crescent, in the area right in front of the Pancake Cottage. We were fortunate enough, Public Works, during our usual inspections, to notice a concrete channel under the ground, directly under the asphalt, that is decaying and falling. City manager sent an email to all transportation businesses on the island, and we've set a weight restriction of 17,000 pounds. We're thinking that's, could eliminate any further damage. Anything heavier than that could collapse that storm drain under the roadway. So I wanted you all to be aware of that, especially the public. Lately, I've noticed
Lately, I've noticed many of the businesses have been notified, heavier trucks than should be there, and I've been doing my best, as well as Public Works, to try to get them to go around, unfortunately. I know it's a long drive, but what we can't do, that's a main artery in town, what we can't do is break that roadway, or in fact, they could break an axle. We're designing a repair, and hopefully they'll be underway real soon, but I just wanted to make sure the public was aware and to bear with us, and we're going to get it repaired as soon as possible. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, the larger trucks are coming over Mount Ada, so the back part of Wrigley Terrace is now two-way traffic. So, just be aware that those trucks are big, just cautioning.
It's very tight roadway. We hope that everybody takes extreme care and watches closely.
Especially right there at the curve where the Cotter House was, that's under construction.
Yes.
That has become a really dangerous curve, so just use caution when you're using Wrigley Terrace.
Yes, we've spoken to the contractor there. Planning has been informing them, and hopefully traffic will flow through there without any instances.
Yeah, this morning, there was a lot of traffic, large vehicles on that road.
I appreciate the no parking signs that were up. That was good, that was good to see.
Yes. So, please, any transportation agencies, if you're, if it's questionable whether or not you're around the 17,000 pounds, please go around. Be careful and watch yourself. We're fortunate, we've had good weather. As we all know, when it rains, that road, the top roadway is going to have some rocks falling.
Yeah.
So, hopefully, we can get this thing done sooner rather than later, and we appreciate all of your cooperation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay, consent calendar.
Yes, Mayor, there are 12 items on the consent calendar this evening, six of which are waterside permits. You have actions from the January 7th council meeting, expenditures, warrants in the amount of $500,000, payroll in the amount of $188,000. You have an encroachment permit for a grease interceptor for Maggie's Blue Rose Restaurant. You have a resolution establishing an appropriations limit for fiscal year 1314, a professional services agreement with On the Wing Falconry, an item pertaining to an alternate city prosecutor, a waterside permit for the following businesses: Catalina Coastal Tours, Scotty Sports Fishing, Catalina Adventures Sailing, Catalina Snorkeling Adventures, Diversity Charters, Catalina Snorkel and Scuba Adventures round out the end of your consent calendar this evening.
Okay, there are 12 items on consent. We've had a request from the audience to address item number 12, so I'd like to pull that from the consent calendar. Any other members care to pull another item for off-consent? Anyone in the audience care to pull an item from consent for further evaluation? Okay, anyone care to entertain then a motion for the 11 items remaining on consent?
I will make a motion to approve items one through 11.
I'll second it.
Call for a vote, please.
Four ayes and one absent, Councilmember Olson.
Okay, I'm going to abstain from item number 12, so I'll move to the audience. It's all yours, my vote. The applicants are here.
And Mr. Mayor Protem, if I could also have the harbor master be available, should there be additional questions on this item? He's here as well?
He's here.
My name is Cindy Sheldonbrand, and I am an attorney in Orange County, and I'm here on behalf of Catalina Snorkel and Scuba Adventures to address item number 12. As you can see, there are four provisions which have been suggested as contingencies for the issuance of the waterside permit. I would like to address those, not necessarily in order, but one at a time, and starting first with item number one. Item number one calls for the payment of all fees owed to the City of Avalon as outlined in letters dated October 10th and November 13th, 2013. They say they're attached, I assume they were, to the council members' copies. They were not with the agenda that was listed online, and one of my questions was, are the responses to those letters which were prepared by me and sent to the city also provided to the members of the city council?
The response letters were not?
Okay. I have copies of both, of the responses to both of those letters for the members of the council. Mr. Lieberman, who is the proprietor of the snorkel adventures, has been working with the City of Avalon for months now in an attempt to resolve some outstanding issues. Each of these issues has been the subject of letter-writing concerns, telephone calls, not through the city attorney's office, but through council in Los Angeles, Best, Best and Krieger, and my office. This first issue deals with the payment of certain fees, and if you look at those letters, you will see that nowhere in those letters from the city is a specific amount specified as to what Mr. Lieberman is supposed to pay. This proposed ruling making it contingent on him to pay something which is unspecified is unfair on its face. We do know what it's supposed to mean. There was a question at one time as to how one was being charged for activities within the old waterside permits. It was $25 per month or 7% of gross receipts for activities that take place within the waters that were defined as part of the harbor. Several years ago, Mr. Lieberman operated a camp, and he did have some activities within the harbor, and he paid the 7% fee. That was for one summer only. Thereafter, he has desired to maintain his waterside permit but has had no activities outside of Lover's Point, Casino, or Casino Point, Lover's Cove, none of them in the areas that were previously defined as the harbor. Your recent ruling expanding the harbor to include Casino Point and Lover's Cove, it was express understanding that the 7% fee was not to be expanded to include those two areas. If there has been a misunderstanding, and in fact, all of the operators are now going to pay a 7% fee for operating at Casino Point and Lover's Cove, then that's something that the city council needs to make clear to us. If that's the case, Mr. Lieberman will pay it, along with everyone else. If, however, it was never the intention to expand the 7% taxation fee to those two areas, then Mr. Lieberman has paid all of the fees which were required of him. Because there has been an ongoing issue of outstanding fees to the city, we have asked repeatedly to explain to us what is owed and how it's owed, and an audit was offered. Mr. Lieberman participated in a two-day audit with the city covering years 2011 and 2012. That audit resulted after two days where he had to take time off work, bring his accountant, go to the city and go through the audit, it was a wash. There was no money owed to the City of Avalon. So, as to item number one, we need clarification from the council. Is it the council's intention to have the 7% fee include Casino Point and Lover's Cove? Do we know?
If I could, if I could say something on this, I believe that this is not being represented accurately. The issue with Mr. Lieberman and the money's owed isn't underreporting.
Mr. Lieberman has operated, has not operated in harbor waters at all in the last several years. When he did operate in it, he paid a 7% fee.
Sure.
The issue is the fee that the city has sought to impose for the last year is for, it's a harbor use fee. What is a harbor use fee? It is defined in the municipal code as the use of harbor facilities. What we have in Mr. Lieberman's instance, and we have photos attached to the staff report, is Mr. Lieberman's business has been using harbor facilities without paying the harbor fee, in particular, the pier, which is defined as a harbor facility. Every Tuesday, when there's crew shifts, Mr. Lieberman has been selling tickets, signing people up, or actually, signing people up, getting the waivers signed on the pier that is a harbor facility, and therefore, the use of the harbor facility itself triggers the harbor use fees. So, we're asking that as long as he's been using harbor facilities, it's not, it's not the other fee, you know, expanding the harbor water, no, it's the use of harbor facilities, the use of the city's pier. In order to do that, we need all of the financial statements from Mr. Lieberman from the time that he started using the pier until the present. That's what that fee is. It's not the other fee that council is representing, it's for the use of the pier without paying the harbor use, the harbor facilities fee.
Well, and so, but I would expound on that, too, that it is also an underreporting in that we know that there is use taking place. Certainly, the $25 amount does not accurately reflect the business being done.
Well, that's a fascinating statement, but I'm aware of no proof that the waters of the harbor have been used in the last many years. If the council wishes to expand it to include the pier, that's new information that over the months that we have been corresponding with the city, no one has ever mentioned, and no one has ever honored the request for an audit on this issue. If, in fact, there is an issue that the pier itself created a harbor use, that's an issue that I will have to research more fully. Up until this point, it has always been defined as the waters, and it did not include the harbor waters because he did not take any snorkeling or scuba trips into the harbor waters since he has been maintaining the $25 per month fee.
Do charter fishing boats pay the 7%?
Yes.
Do they fish in the harbor? They pick up on the pier or on the docks?
Yes.
That's a harbor use fee.
If, in fact, that's the issue, that's something that is new to us, and we will now have to audit that issue, that the question is the use of the pier and the specific language behind that. But at least I now understand the issue from the city council's perspective. I want to skip number two, and I want to go to number three. The number three point was limiting all snorkeling tours to no more than 10 persons per certified guide. The issue of safety is paramount to Mr. Lieberman and his business. We have requested, when this first issue came up, we said, "We will comply with industry standards as they relate to the number of persons that a supervisor can appropriately care for in the water." This is similar to being a lifeguard, okay? We're not talking about diving activities, we're talking about snorkeling activities. We suggested that there are industry groups, for instance, the Professional Association of Diving Instructors might be an appropriate one to go to for a recommendation as to the number of persons that a, that a lifeguard can supervise in the water during snorkeling activities. We've offered that to the city, we've received no response until we got this indication that someone sometime decided that 10 persons was the right number. I don't know what that's based on. It's certainly not industry standards. It's certainly not the standards that the City of Avalon uses for its own lifeguards, nor, to my knowledge, are there similar restrictions being placed on any other applicant for a waterside permit, only Mr. Lieberman. There is no safety issue with Mr. Lieberman, he has a perfectly clean safety history. So, when we look at the issue of safety, we ask the city council to please reconsider item number three and specify an industry organization that you think is qualified to render an opinion to us as to how many people are appropriate, and we will abide by that decision. We've suggested Patty, if the city council or staff feel that there is another agency that would be appropriate, we can go to that. But unilaterally, to select a number and impose it upon him and not upon any of the other operators is unfair.
To be honest with you on that, I have not seen any of the other operators take 20, 30 people out with one guide, and to have the other operators complain that they've had to go out and rescue one of Mr. Lieberman's customers, that, to me, that is a safety issue.
Well, again, we get to the area of innuendo and rumor, and nothing
I'm...
That I can establish. We have a clean history, we would agree to 15, we would agree to an independent agency, industry audit, but 10 for snorkeling is unreasonable.
The 10 figure was based upon consultation with the harbor and is based on industry standards. I don't have the exact standard, but it is based on industry standards. In addition, all snorkeling operators in Avalon are being required as part of their waterside permit to limit it to 10 per instructor. We did that last month, we had at least one snorkeling that had that condition. So, again, this is not singling out Mr. Lieberman, this is what is a universal requirement for snorkeling tours in Avalon.
This is snorkeling tours, not snorkeling instruction. No instruction is being given, just tours, and, and again, 15 seems appropriate, having the industry give us an opinion seems appropriate, but to be told this is the industry standard when we have been asking for months to submit it to an industry agency is unfair. If you think you've got the data to support the concept that this is the industry standard, I'd like to see it. I've asked to see it, I have not been provided it, and I have suggested that it be submitted to an industry authority to render such an opinion for us.
I think doing that would be good for everyone, because if you'd get an industry standard, then if there's any liability out there, you use that, use them as the guide. So, I can't see any problem with that.
And that, again, where we, where this figure came from.
That's where it came from.
It did come?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Then if it did, then you've already got it.
From what? From what agency? From what industry?
I don't, I don't have the specific, the specific agency, but we have been working, I know our office has been working with you, I know we've been working at the Harbor Department, and there was a lot of discussion on this. So, it's, again, and there's an industry standard, we believe this figure fits that standards. Even if not, even if there was not an, quote, industry standard, the Harbor Department believes that given the circumstances in Avalon, that the figure 10 to 1 is an appropriate figure for Avalon.
Is Mr. Lieberman the only one that's doing guided snorkeling tours?
I don't know, I'd have to... I don't know. I'd have to, I don't know that.
Harbor Master is here. He can answer that question.
I believe K N K Scuba and Ron Moore, who's Catalina diving, or, there's like three others that do it, and they were all, they all have the same conditions placed on their permit back in November when they were approved.
Was this based upon some study that you conducted with the industry, sir?
No, I just, I feel that 10 is a safe number. Anything over that without more than one guide is very difficult with the snorkeling boats, I'm sorry, the glass bottom boats that are operating in the same area, and people start getting spread out, and one person looking over 15 others, you know, they're, might be spread out to where they're out in the glass bottom boat fairway and causing problems.
Okay, so in the opinion of the Harbor Master, the 10 is the appropriate number?
That's, that's my opinion, yes.
There's another speaker.
One more.
Well, I'm not concluded with my remarks.
On this point, though?
On the question of safety, yes.
Right, we're going point by point. I think that's the most efficient way to handle it.
Bob Kennedy, Catalina Scubalov. We need to be careful when we put numbers on what would be appropriate. Industry standards, if there's educational material being delivered, the industry standards are six to one. A snorkel tour is treated differently because it doesn't really, you know, meet itself with educational standards, but the industry as a whole shoots for a target number of 12 to 1 under what they determine ideal conditions. So we have to be careful if we say 10 to 1 in the documents that are before you, or 12 to 1, or 20 to 1. You also need to clarify in what type of conditions and environment that that is appropriate, because there are conditions here, and Dave will attest to this, that maybe 3 to 1 would be inappropriate. Is that fair? So try not to make it so subjective that we remove safety.
Which brings us back to, we should leave the professionals to make the decision as to what's appropriate, and not be imposing unilateral guidelines on an industry that has a completely clean safety history and years of operation in Avalon waters. The next point is item number four, and while Mr. Lieberman has and does comply with this request, it should be pointed out that this is, these are coastal waters. They are controlled by the Coast Guard. This is a shared waterway, and while it obviously makes sense for him to keep the snorkelers away from the boat, it is equally the boat's responsibility to stay away from the snorkelers. They do not have the right of way to those waters. But we have no problem complying with four and five. So now we come to number two, which is the most difficult point for us. Mr. Lieberman's contract is with the cruise ships, and under the cruise ship contract, he meets guests as they are brought by tender to the dock, to the wharf. They are offloaded. They walk from the wharf to Lover's Cove. They are given their equipment. They sign waivers. They have their tour, and they leave their equipment there. They are walked back to the wharf where they get onto their tenders and return to the boat. The equipment is taken from his permanent facility at Pebbley Beach to the beach at Lover's Cove. It is then taken out of the water at Lover's Cove, put back on the boat, on the truck, and returned to Pebbley Beach where it is cleaned and the water processed through the water treatment facility. There is, any attempt to change that process will violate his contracts with the cruise lines. He can't meet the guests at any place other than on the wharf. There was a concern expressed some months ago that businesses on the wharf had complained that snorkel participants were using their tables, chairs, benches, countertops to fill out the waivers for the snorkel activity. We were asked through Best Best and Krieger to agree that no waivers will be signed on the wharf, so that there's no clipboards out, there's no waiver signing, there's nothing going on on the wharf. Ever since we arrived at that agreement last summer, there has been no waiver signed on the wharf. The guests are met on the boat, met as they come off the boat, walk to Lover's Cove, they fill out their waivers at Lover's Cove, they're given their equipment, they take their activity, and they are returned to the boat. This request that a permanent physical location be established somewhere between the wharf and Lover's Cove for Mr. Lieberman's business would literally drive his business out. There is no location between the wharf and Lover's Cove for him to have a permanent location where waivers can be signed. He cannot ask guests to carry their equipment from the wharf to Lover's Cove. It would violate the contract with the cruise ships. He cannot ask the cruise ship to drop their guests at some other location. City of Avalon already regulates that. They want guests from the cruise ships coming and going from the wharf. We can find no reason for this demand for a permanent location. It doesn't affect city taxes. He has a city address at Pebbley Beach. He pays taxes there. There are any number of other operators who use the city's facilities at the wharf, where they do allow them to sign waivers. The fishing boats all sign their waivers on the wharf. They haven't been stricken from having their waivers signed on the wharf. There are other dive operators who operate off the wharf. They have their waivers signed before the guests get onto the boats to go out to the dives. The Kids Camp CMI, C-I-M-I, uses Lover's Cove. It's not being asked to even provide a waterside permit, obtain a waterside permit for exactly the same activity that Mr. Lieberman conducts. For dive operators, there is parking provided for this activity at the ferry terminal. This activity takes place at Lover's Cove for Mr. Lieberman. It is inappropriate and impossible for him to comply with your number two. So while we will undergo whatever audit is appropriate for number one, we would ask that we get industry specialists in if you feel it necessary for number three. We will comply with four and five, but two has to go. And I thank you.
Do we have an ordinance that requires cruise ship passengers to get off on the green pier, considering Princess Cruise today unloaded on one of the floats?
It's, no, the issue is, is that there is no, there is no requirement in any municipal code I know of that requires that the waivers be signed on the pier. There are other businesses in town where people can contract for things on the boat, and then they go to that business, the physical location of that business, and sign waivers. If you recall in the past, Mr. Lieberman had a lease for Lover's Cove area, and that lease was terminated by the city for what the city council determined at that time to be a series of breaches over a number of years that justified the termination of that lease. What the city is asking on this condition is that Mr. Lieberman, like other businesses, have a place of business where people can go, sign their waivers. Not that you get a free lease on city property, which is what's occurring if he can conduct, continue to conduct the business at Lover's Cove, just as he did before, but without a lease. So again, what we're asking for is that, like other businesses, the snorkel businesses, that he have a physical location to conduct his business, not on the city property, because he's been evicted from doing business on the city property for multiple breaches of his lease. That's not, you know, that was an action that was taken a while ago, and the consequence of that is he has to find another place to conduct business. There are businesses available, offices available in Avalon that he could work out, that are appropriately zoned for this. It's not the city's responsibility, after having evicted a tenant for breach of the lease, for that tenant, for the city to find that tenant, another location to conduct business.
That's a fascinating argument, just heard now, but it does go back to, is this a vendetta? Because that's what it certainly looks like. There has been an attempt over the course of the last year to drive this man out of business. If the city was upset with him over water issues years ago, which have now been resolved, and he goes on conducting his business, why is he being subjected to treatment which is adverse to him and not in comparison with other activities? Why doesn't the Kids Camp have to comply with that? Why doesn't everyone else who is having activities at Lover's Cove have to do this?
Have to do what?
All he does, have to have a separate location where waivers are signed.
I can, I can think of quite a few snorkel places that have locations, and they go snorkeling at Lover's Cove.
Certainly there are places which have other locations.
And they are, they, they, it's all part of their waterside permits.
But he has a permanent location. It is just not between the wharf and Lover's Cove. And to comply with the cruise ship business, which he has by contract, he must take his guests from the wharf to Lover's Cove and back again, not on a tour of Pebbley Beach. So this is a question of taking them from the wharf to the cove, having them sign a piece of paper, putting them in the water, giving them their activity, and walking them back to the cruise ship. There is no need for him to have yet a further location in the city of Avalon. He has a business address. He conducts his business in Pebbley Beach. All the equipment is stored there. All the equipment is cleaned there. The issues that the city had years ago with regard to wastewater have been resolved by the establishment of the facility at Pebbley Beach. He has tried to comply. Each time the city asks for something reasonable, he complies.
And I have to disagree with that, in that a previous administrator here who went to bat for him on numerous times got so frustrated that he's the one that came to us and said, "We're going to terminate his lease out at Lover's Cove."
And that happened years ago?
Yes. Not years ago. That was only a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Do not say years ago. This is not ancient history. This is current, going on, constant.
This, this was at least two years ago, and it is ancient history as concerns with this waterside permit. If you're going to deny his waterside permit and putting in the number two is in essence denying his waterside permit, what the city council is saying is, "Mr. Lieberman, you may no longer do business in the city of Avalon." That's, that's the position you're taking.
No, that's his, that would be his, that would be his decision by not complying to that.
There is no, it is impossible for him to comply.
I can, I can think of a location right now that would be available.
And, and the contract with the cruise ships.
He walks by that space every time he takes somebody to Lover's Cove.
He must walk the passengers from the wharf.
He walks right by it every time he takes people to Lover's Cove.
Wonderful. There is no reason he should be asked to rent yet another location in the city of Avalon to conduct his business when the sole purpose of this is that we're upset that years ago, he didn't comply with some water treatment issue in the opinion of some members of the city council.
Again, just for the record, you know, there is no vendetta. The fact is, is that Mr. Lieberman lost his lease with the city, and continues to conduct business in a way that is not in compliance with the city code and the city regulations. And so, all we're trying to do is make him comply with the same rules that other people are complying with. We will look at the C-I-M-I, C-I-M-I Kids Camp, okay? But again, we believe that given the situation with this business, that these conditions are appropriate. Again, they have been operating on the pier, and this, I was not present at all conversations, but I, and I'm not going to go through and correct the record on everything, but we would disagree with many of the statements being made today regarding the discussions between Mr. Lieberman's attorney and Amy Rhodes from my office, who's been conducting those discussions.
Well, all of those are a matter of written record, so that doesn't, we don't need to go into at this moment. But the city council has broadened its waterside permit to include Lover's Cove and Casino Point. Although he already had a waterside permit, he came back and applied to the city specifically setting forth what he does at Casino Point and at Lover's Cove. For the city attorney to suggest now that this is not a new rule for Mr. Lieberman is completely ingenuous. He did not, he knew, he knows exactly when the expansion of the waterside permit ordinance went into effect. He knows that, that would require Mr. Lieberman to return to the city council and ask for a permit, and as soon as he did that, you pop this, this demand in here. And this is the demand that they know will drive him out of business. It's unfair, and I ask the city council members to have the courage to bar two, to allow three, I mean, excuse me, yes, to allow three to be studied, and we will participate in an audit as to one. Without question, we will comply with four and five.
And again, I would just say that that misstates what I said.
Well, there is an appearance. There is an appearance of he being picked on, and I'd hate to see the city, you know, we're hearing words about, "Let's go litigate." Now, we're talking about a permanent place, so he has a place in Pebbley Beach, and where he keeps the equipment and all that. The big problem that I recall is that when he would clean off all the wet suits and the equipment, the water would just sit there and stagnate, and the city was on him constantly to clean that up, and even, even put new blacktop there and all that. That was a constant problem area. Finally, the city says, "That's it. You're out of here." So he moved all of his stuff away. Now there's no water issue. And now you've got, he's got a location in Pebbley Beach, and it seems like if he's gonna, if he's gonna pick up his, he's got a contract with the cruise ships, and that's probably pretty lucrative. But if he's being forced to get a location in town, probably there goes all his profits, and that's probably the end to him. That would cause a little problem with the cruise ships too, trying to find somebody else and give them, give them ammunition to come after us. So I think we better just take a good, hard look at all that.
If I could interject here as well, I think there's an unfair representation that this has not been discussed several times. this has not been discussed several times with Mr. Lieberman. We've not tried to work with him. I met with Mr. Lieberman back in October. We went through a number of these issues. They're documented in the letter. Mr. Lieberman left the meeting, it seemed to me, understanding what we discussed. And I would also add that we, while we discussed what we wanted him to do and what we were asking him to do, we did not take any immediate action. So there was no prosecution of Mr. Lieberman. It was, Mr. Lieberman, here's what you need to do to come into compliance. Please comply. Now it's January, the end of January. A lot of time has lapsed since then. I don't think that's fair one bit to suggest that the city has not tried to work with him, has not explained to him what we're looking for. I met with him myself.
The city has been crystal clear that you do not want him doing business as he has. You have been crystal clear that you want him to get another location where he, between Pebbley, excuse me, between Lover's Cove and the wharf. He has been clear that that is impossible. It is financially impossible. It is logistically impossible. It will violate his contracts with the cruise ships. He has repeatedly said that. Yes, Mr. Lieberman met with you. Yes, he participated in an audit. Yes, I have written countless letters to Ms. Rhodes and Ms. Rhodes to me. But so far, the city has not been willing to compromise an inch on what they would do. I would say, let's have an independent industry agency look at it and tell us what safety is. No response, four months, until we get this demand that it's 10, and now the city attorney is telling us that's an industry standard, but I can't tell you where we got it from.
Well, and I'd also point out that we have done things like waiving parking tickets for Mr. Lieberman. So to suggest that we haven't done anything for him or been considerate of his situation or tried to work with him is just not accurate.
No, don't, don't, let's get started on parking tickets. That's another whole subject that we can discuss at another time. It is not one of the four steps here.
Well, you know, we can talk about things that we want to bring up as part of this, and so that's why I'm doing that.
Okay. Does the city council want to engage in a discussion of parking tickets? Because I'll be happy to address it. I was, I will be more than happy to address it right now. At some point in time last fall, the city staff went down and put up a sign at Pebbley, I mean, at Lover's Cove that said, no commercial vehicles can park here, or words to that effect. The only commercial vehicles that ever parked there are Mr. Lieberman's van.
And I'm telling you, that is a lie. That is a lie. Because I know of other commercial vehicles that have been ticketed for being out there.
I didn't finish my statement, sir.
I'm just saying.
Mr. Lieberman's vehicle, the kids, the van that comes from C-I-M-I, and some people who go down there to sell food products. As soon as that sign went up, we said, we have to park the truck here for 75 minutes, up to 75 minutes each day we take a snorkeling tour. That was also part of our application to the city when we asked for waterside permit. We're gonna park for 75 minutes. Why are we gonna park for 75 minutes? Because we've gotta bring the equipment from Pebbley Beach to the beach, where they're gonna give it to the people that are participating. They're gonna take it into the water for 45 minutes. They're gonna come out of the water, we're gonna pick it up, we're gonna put it back on the truck and drive it back to Pebbley Beach. So we asked for permission to park there for 75 minutes. While that process was going forward, the application for the waterside permit, he starts getting parking tickets. And when he gets a parking ticket?
Can I ask a question? When, when did you start the application for the waterside permit?
We filed it, I think in roughly November, December timeframe.
Of last year?
Yes.
Because all parking was stopped a year ago at Lover's Cove.
Well, it's, I believe that the sign went up in March or April?
It was in the spring.
In the spring of last year. So, and as soon as that went up and he started getting tickets, and we believed that this was being addressed at Mr. Lieberman, we sent a letter to Ms. Rhodes, and we said, we want a hearing. This is a quasi-criminal event. He's entitled to an opportunity to due process. We want to be heard. And we were told that there is someone within the city who hears such things, appeals from parking ticket fines. And we asked for a hearing. And I've requested many times since then for a hearing. And not once has Ms. Rhodes given me a hearing on the issue of the parking ticket violation. Why? Because I don't think they want this issue heard. Because I think it brings light to the very issue that I'm talking about. He is being treated unfairly. And it is clear from the record that he is being treated unfairly. And so for every parking ticket, there's a letter asking for a hearing. And so far, the city of Avalon has not given us one hearing.
Again, the parking tickets, we're not enforcing them. Secondly, again, they were waived. Secondly, again, the treatment that Mr. Lieberman is being targeted belies the facts that what actually has happened in this case is Mr. Lieberman, from our view, is asking to be, to operate on a different set of rules than everyone else. For instance, he lost the lease for this space. They've admitted that. Now what do they want? They want to be able to continue to operate their business there by parking their car there. Again, you don't have a lease for it. There was a number of reasons as to why the lease was terminated, and what we're merely saying is, because you lost your lease, there are other places that you can work, you can operate, other businesses have a place of business where you're gonna sign waivers. Mr. Lieberman has been repeatedly asked over the course of the last year or so not to sign a people on the city pier. He has, in fact, continued to do so. And so that is what triggered the harbor use fee, not the amendment of our ordinance. So again, there are, there's a lot of history behind this from our view. We've treated him appropriately, given the conduct that has gone on here. And so we would ask that you go forward with the conditions as presented in the staff report, or give us some direction as to what conditions you think are valid right now, and how you'd like to work, if you are directing staff, to work with him on some other conditions to clarify some, we'll take some direction. But I think what we definitely want to do here is get some direction, either all five conditions, three of the five, come back and work on two, or hold this over and, again, try and work a resolution. We'd like to get some direction. Of course, there may be other people that want to talk about this.
Well, again, we will work with one, and three, four, and five aren't an issue. Two, he has a location, just like other businesses, who use Lover's Cove, who use Casino Point. They don't have to have a location where they conduct their dive activity or their snorkel activity. He has his location at Pebbley Beach. So I would, it's two that has to go, and we'll work with the city completely on one and three.
Counsel?
Well, I voted in his favor last time, okay? And I still will do the same thing. I don't like what I'm hearing here. I don't want to see us back litigating something. And he's probably got a lot to lose if he's forced to do what's down here about having a location between the pier and Lover's Cove. So I would still be on his side. But I really think, based on everything I've heard, you guys ought to get together, try to see if you can work that out.
Just do staff recommendations. Right? Can we do that? Vote on staff recommendation.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we just go staff recommendation.
I will second that.
Will we put yes or no?
Yes.
Two ayes, Councilmember Hernandez and Mayor Protem Ponce. One no, Councilmember Morrow. One abstention, Mayor Kennedy, and one absent, Councilmember Olson.
Hey, thanks for taking the point, Michael.
General business.
Yes, Mayor, we have one item on general business this evening. It's an ordinance adopting the state's building code standards. Brian is here to provide you with the brief staff report on this item. Thank you, Brian.
Good evening, gentlemen. Here we are, every three years, the same show. The ICC comes out with this book, and they give us 12 months to adopt it. So then the state of California rewrites it to make it into this book. And then six months after that, it goes into our municipal code. The reason why we have this process is because the state of California makes all sorts of changes to it, and for us to maintain our local changes to the ordinance, we have to adopt it by ordinance tonight so we can go into our municipal code. Are there any questions?
That's a lot of changes. Those big books go into that little book?
Yeah, they're right there. They fit in one sentence.
So that inspires a question. As we continually adapt and adopt changes in code, do we have the ability to review that to determine whether or not it should or should not impact fees as a result of whatever these code changes mean? An example of that, so many months ago, we were encouraged by the fire department to adopt the new fire code where Avalon is listed as high risk. You remember that?
Yeah, I heard the discussions.
Now, I respect that, and I voted with that process, but subsequent to that action, property insurance almost doubled on the island. Now, in my recollection, the fire, the risk of fire on the island has not increased, it hasn't decreased. We live in a high-risk area. So once we acknowledge that we live in a high-risk area, boom, Mr. Taxpayer is getting reamed now by the insurance companies because they have found a spot where they can go, okay, let's charge more money for that. Do we have the same thing that happens within the building code? Is there provisions in there that create additional workforce for the planning department? Is there any provisions in there that require additional or expanded plan checks? Have we analyzed the financial impacts that may be imposed as a result of agreeing to the new code?
I'd say the only thing that does affect the cost of construction would be all the green building requirements that are slowly weaving their way in. Right here, you have just the building code. There's also a green building code. There's also green building code standards, and these things have been kind of gaining momentum as we go, you know, down the adoption process. To try to tinker with them or add amendments to them, we could only do it on a climate or a geography or a geology reason. And that's written right into the building codes in the state ordinance. But as far as a wildland fire, I was privy to those discussions. I don't know exactly what impact it had.
I was using that as an example. I mean, we adopted the fire code. What I'm getting at is, we have already established our 2014 fee structure as it pertains to planning. You know, plan checks are this much, you know, your building permit is this much per square foot, the school district gets a chunk of that. Is there anything within that code that would indicate that we would need to either lower our fees as a result of the reduction in paperwork required and/or increase the fee as a result of increased staff time as it pertains to the building code? I guess that's the crux of my question.
Mr. Mayor, some cities are charging what's called a green building plan check fee, and that's about the only thing I can think of offhand as far as raising our fees.
We could certainly take a look at that, though. We'd be happy to.
I mean, it would be important, if we're gonna adopt a code, it's nice to know the cause and effect.
Sure.
It's one thing to build safe, you know, do everything by the rules, but at times of financial difficulty, it's important that we analyze the amount of time we spend on a project versus the fees that we're collecting as a result.
And you're spot on. These are important for what you were saying, to make sure that we're adhering to the most recent safety requirements, and that's the main reason why we're trying to make sure that we're including these in our own code. But we'd be happy to look at what's being brought in, look at what other cities have faced as a result of this, because this is not just Avalon, of course, this is municipalities throughout the state of California that bring these into their codes as well. So we can do that and come back and show you what we find.
That was the only questions I had for you, Brian. Do you and the audience have a question? Lot of no, no shaking.
We are suggesting one change to the ordinance. The ordinance does have a provision for refunds of certain fees if they're erroneously paid or collected. And what we're asking for, whenever that occurs, right now it says the building official, and we're gonna change that to read building official or planning director on those refunds. So in case Brian's not available, it can be Amanda, if Amanda's not available, it's Brian or whoever has those positions.
Then I'm the planning director, so it's actually three people, right?
That's right. Well, but it'll read, or planning director.
Okay.
So we'll make that administrative change for the second reading, well, for when it comes up for adoption.
Okay. Any other questions?
Anyone care to entertain a motion then?
I make a motion to introduce and waive all further readings of an ordinance repealing and reenacting several sections of Title VIII of the municipal code and adopting the state building standard codes as modified, including Scott's little.
Revised?
Revised.
I'll second it.
Call for a vote, please.
Four ayes and one absent, Councilmember Olson.
Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome, sir.
City manager's report.
No report, Mayor.
Scott?
No report.
Rich?
You're good?
You're good?
Yep.
Michael?
I am going to Sacramento tomorrow. I will be sitting on Tax and Revenue Policy Committee on Thursday, and I will be chairing the Community Services Policy Committee on Friday. I'll be the chair for this year.
Fantastic.
I'm good. I don't have any announcements.
Okay. We're adjourned.